Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. I'd like to welcome you to the October 23rd City Council meeting. Tonight, we have eight items on our agenda. Mr. Fawcett, if you would, please continue with the roll call of members.
Tatman.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Hines.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
If everybody would, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have distributed the previous minutes to the previous meeting. And I wonder if we have a motion to accept the meetings as they are, minutes as they are, I'm sorry. Ms. Kearney has motion to accept, seconded by Mr. Hines. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And the minutes have been accepted. At this time, we have reports from our committees. Whoever would like to go. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, President Arnold. Transit Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number eight. It's the first reading of a resolution. And this is authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with ODOC's Elderly and Disabled Transit Care Assistance Program grant and accepting $9,665. This is something we do every year. Last year, we received $13,125. This is a reimbursement. And at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule so we can accept this money. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other guests? Mr. Florima?
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services Committee has four items on the agenda for the evening, two that require attention. Number two is the second reading to amend section 121.03 and add section 121.032 of the Catified Ordinance to establish combined police and fire dispatch operation composition. This doesn't need to go, but it can go off three reads. Number three, provide core agreement with Ross County Commissioners whereby the city will continue to be eligible through 2018 for the state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing council for indigent defendants in criminal cases. This is an annual thing, we'll create plenty of time for, and should also go all three reads. Number four, the transfer of $3,702.95 for purchase of firearms, posters, and ammunition for certain employees of the Chillicothe community. This is something that they do need, and at the proper time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule. And finally, number seven, to accept and appropriate $2,532.40 received as reimbursement from H.I.B.T.A. or Police Department over time due to an occurrence during a drug enforcement detail. This is a check that we have now, and at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule. So it can be disbursed. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Florima.
Appreciate it.
Any other reports? Ms. Cole?
The Finance Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. That is item number six, which is at first read, which is to appropriate the sum of $10,000 received as security as a result of a structured fire at 327-329 Clay Street in Chillicothe, Ohio. So that this money can be transferred to its appropriate places, I will ask at the appropriate time to please waive the three-read rule. I also want to point out that the Finance Committee will be holding a meeting Wednesday, October 25th, that's this Wednesday, October 25th, at 6:30 in council chambers. And on the agenda will be legislative requests 17-127, 16-118, and 17-127. I will also, at the appropriate time after our legislation, be asking that we go into an executive session.
Okay. And what time was that on that Wednesday?
6:30.
6:30. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cole. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Hines?
City Services has one item on the agenda tonight. That's the third reading to establish a curbside recycling program. Accept Ohio DTA grant $105,000. Accept the grant from the Sawdust Waste District, $50,000. Authorize acceptance of bids for bins and trucks. Authorize the hiring of two recycling program positions and establish a monthly fee of $1.95 for the service. The 25 cents of that fee going for capital costs. Councilperson Neal co-chaired that particular assignment with former councilperson Clay, and she would like to offer some remarks concerning that item.
Go right ahead.
Two years ago, after a lot of requests from residents of Chillicothe about bringing back recycling program, we talked to the Mayor Administration Council and decided that we would try to come up with a program where we learned from the mistakes of our past and develop a new, a new curbside recycling program. So Mayor Feeney was asked what we could do to make this successful. And two of the main things we decided was that it had to make sense financially, it had to be sustainable. So the first thing that we realized is the recycling process itself has improved. It's much easier. You no longer have to sort your recyclables. All your recyclables can go into one can. The second thing was that the numbers had to make sense. The program had to be sustainable, and it had to be affordable. David Clay was the previous Republican Councilman from the Second Ward. We were both co-chairs on this committee. So the final product we're voting on here tonight is the result of a bipartisan effort. I spoke with David this weekend, and he asked that I voiced his complete and total support for the program that we're voting on tonight. The mayor solicited grants, and we were awarded $300,000 in grants, and we have every reason to expect another $300,000 in 2018. Those grant funds take care of the trucks and also the majority of the receptacles. The $1.95 per month per household fee is an affordable, dedicated stream of revenue that makes sure this program will continue. The program is sustainable. It is affordable. It saves money on tipping fees. While it's not a perfect solution for every single person in Chillicothe, it is overwhelmingly supported by the majority of citizens. As the program develops, we'll continue to try to make improvements. My hope is that we can eventually accommodate those who have asked for a smaller can. This is a good program, a solid program, an affordable program. It's good for the environment. It's good for the city of Chillicothe. I am voting yes tonight to pass this legislation, and I'm asking my fellow council members to join me in supporting this very worthwhile program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Very good information. Anybody? Yes, Ms. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Human Resources Committee does not have anything to report this evening. There are no items on tonight's agenda. But I would like to report on the special add-on committee that was canceled due to procedural error to be hopefully rectified by the President of Council in collaboration with the law director. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Kearney?
I have one item for the community service legislation tonight, and that is very important to the community. And it does not have anything to do with adding, it's just a renewal. So we're asking the public to do as council is doing tonight, to overwhelmingly support the Ross County Children's Service Renewal Levy on November the 7th. This is very important to our community. And again, I like to emphasize that it's not a new, an add-on, it's just a renewal. So please encourage your neighbors and everyone in the community to go out and vote for this levy. You know our children need this, and this is specifically for the children in Ross County. Also, at the appropriate time, I like to, I will ask them to waive the three-read rule so that it can be listed prior to November the 7th.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. And once again, I got to apologize to our home audience, the camera went blacky again, twice so far. So I don't know why it does, I'll try to figure that out. Ms. Corcoran? Were you putting your hand up? I'm sorry. Mr. Tatman?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Judiciary Committee does not have anything on the agenda tonight, but I would like to make a motion to reconsider an item we passed at the last meeting. And I think if you turn through the first page in your, actually, the ordinance 88-17.
Okay. You want a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second on the motions, Mr. Florima? Roll call on that motion, please.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Can I ask, does that clear, take care of the situation because the street goes back to two-way? Or makes it an all-way stop?
I certainly hope so.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And thanks to the guidance of Mr. Fawcett, I hopefully got this corrected. So now I make a motion to pass this as amended.
I have a motion to pass 88-17 as we have amended it by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Can I ask, does that clear, take care of the situation because the street goes back to two-way? Or makes it an all-way stop?
I certainly hope so.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And thanks to the guidance of Mr. Fawcett, I hopefully got this corrected. So now I make a motion to pass this as amended.
I have a motion to pass 88-17 as we have amended it by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Can I ask, does that clear, take care of the situation because the street goes back to two-way? Or makes it an all-way stop?
I certainly hope so.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And thanks to the guidance of Mr. Fawcett, I hopefully got this corrected. So now I make a motion to pass this as amended.
I have a motion to pass 88-17 as we have amended it by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Can I ask, does that clear, take care of the situation because the street goes back to two-way? Or makes it an all-way stop?
I certainly hope so.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And thanks to the guidance of Mr. Fawcett, I hopefully got this corrected. So now I make a motion to pass this as amended.
I have a motion to pass 88-17 as we have amended it by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Can I ask, does that clear, take care of the situation because the street goes back to two-way? Or makes it an all-way stop?
I certainly hope so.
That's what I thought.
Okay. And thanks to the guidance of Mr. Fawcett, I hopefully got this corrected. So now I make a motion to pass this as amended.
I have a motion to pass 88-17 as we have amended it by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr. Florima. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Hines.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
So that ordinance has passed with the amendments that we have done this evening.
Yes, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tatman and Mr. Florima.
Just one point of order. We, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
You've called for a possible, is that you said?
At the, after, after legislation.
Okay. Was there a reason?
Yes, there will be, the reason will be potential litigation and possible acquisition of property. Two different items.
I'm just making sure, John.
When he calls, it gets in for us. Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Thanks.
Any other committee reports? Any committee reports on any outstanding assignments that we have right now? At this time? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll go into our reports of our official, our officials, and his mayor, our mayor, Mr. Luttrell.
Thank you, President Arnold. I'm going to start with some city updates. I'll move fast because I've got a lot, got a lot to prepare for tonight. First of all, our 2017 paving program is complete. It was completed last week when we repainted the final finishing touches on our first bike lane in town. So right there on Yachtangy Parkway, we have our first bike lane. It goes in front of the YMCA in the city park. We're working already on next year's streets and alleys, and we'll look forward to providing another efficient, vast service next year. Today, leaf pickup started. This program will work the same way that it did last year. It'll be 10 consecutive weeks. Your, we'll do leaf pickup in your neighborhood, starting with and organized by the day of your trash pickup. So the first week, if your trash pickup is on Mondays, this is your week. Next week will be Tuesdays, so on and so forth. Inevitably, leaves fall early, leaves fall late. We will do our best to be flexible, but we also want to offer some predictability, especially if you know that it's your week and you can park cars off of the streets. That's a big help to us. And if you can hold back on putting the leaves in the streets until it's close to your week, that also helps with stormwater drainage and that sort of thing. I'm happy to report that six aerators have been installed in the pond in the park, Yachtangy Lake, and I've learned a couple of things. One is those aerators will eliminate unwanted plant life, over a period of time increase fish life up to 50 percent, and eliminate an inch of sludge every two years. So we have aerators, and there will be a couple of fountains installed either at the end of this year or early next year. So look for a healthier lake, and thank you to Parks and Rec Director Bonner for that work. He's also finished the installation of 14 security cameras that are up and running in the annex. So you've been warned, do not be naughty in the annex. This Friday, 9:30 a.m., is the Second Annual Main Rally. And for those of you who missed it last year, I don't know how you did, but they're expecting over 2,000 students this year. It's going to be a big, big deal. I'm really proud of the students in this community getting together. So if you have any way to show your support for them, please do. About a week ago, we had a visit from nine members of the National Town Builders Association. Three of them were from as far away as Australia, others were from Arkansas, Florida, Kentucky. They were in Chillicothe for about 24 hours, and it was a really neat 24 hours. They gave us advice and really looked at Chillicothe with outsider's eyes, and it was neat to see because they all appreciate so much the gem that we have here. I want to thank Chillicothe native Michael Watkins for really making that visit happen, and I look forward to taking some of their suggestions and that momentum and continuing to move forward on improving what we have downtown. Next Tuesday is Halloween, October 31st. That will be our trick-or-treat or beggar's night. It has, as we mentioned before, been changed back to 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. So be ready for your trick-or-treaters. Did I say that wrong? It's been changed from 5:00 to 6:30 to 6:00 to 7:30. I apologize. Something went down. Let's do that again. Halloween, October 31st, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Bravo.
Everybody get that?
Yeah.
All right. I too would like to offer my support and endorsement of the Children's Services Renewal Levy, this time as much or more than any other children in this community need our help. I have two statements on our curbside recycling program. One is mine, and one is for somebody who can't be here. So I will give mine first. About two years ago, at this time, I was asking for your vote as mayor of this town. And in that process, I committed to getting us back to basics and providing really good city services. We work every day in the city to get better at that. Our services are not excellent yet, but we try, and we try, and we try, and we're trying to get them to be the best that we can. We're paving roads. We brought back a dependable large item pickup. Leaf pickup started today, and this recycling program is another step in that direction. We put together, as Councilwoman Neal mentioned, an affordable and sustainable program that will be another great service for our neighbors in this community. I'm proud of the process. I'm proud of council working together. It was really neat to watch the spirit of back and forth and trying to make the best program that we could. I'm proud of the $600,000 in partner and grant money that we brought in. Frankly, without that, I'm not sure that really we would have the affordable program. And honestly, the feedback and the conversation with the community has been great. I think one recommendation that will come out of this process is putting trash and recycling in a separate fund so that those funds can be monitored more easily. I want to thank Councilwoman Neal. I want to thank that committee. Thank former Councilman David Clay for all of his work. And our neighbors for being here tonight, pro-con, the conversation. For us in government, this is great to see. I love seeing it happen, and the engagement has just been excellent. I will respectfully ask council for your approval of this program, affirmative vote, and to continue moving Chillicothe forward. My next statement is a statement that former Councilman David Clay sent to me and asked me to read tonight. It's a little bit longer, and I'm just going to read it verbatim. It's a little more eloquent than what I put forward. Here we go. "I want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor and city council for your hard work on the recycling program up for a third read tonight. And I would like to offer a special thank you to Beth Neal for her continued steadfast leadership on this important topic. It was a privilege working alongside you to make sure that the program you will vote on is one that we can all be proud of, and I urge you to vote yes this evening. This is not a Democrat versus Republican issue. We know that the trash we put in the ground is polluting the environment. The city of Chillicothe pays over $50,000 a year to keep the old city landfills safe from contaminating the ground around them. But we also know that recycling can reduce our harmful impact by reducing the amount of garbage we send to such landfills. But nothing is safe in politics in a campaign season. As a Republican on city council, I was constantly watching our city's finances, as well as the programs and services we provided our residents. I fought hard for a strategic and facility plan that would help the city operate more effectively and cost efficiently. And I think it's important to remember that as co-chair of the committee that proposed the recycling program before you tonight, I was constantly challenging the mayor's office for more information, more research, and a better understanding of the financial impact. And this program, as proposed, is a conservative approach to recycling. This program pays for itself with a $2 fee, including providing a responsible fund for continued upkeep and capital improvements to the program's infrastructure. This eliminates the risk associated with securing loans or appropriating money from the general fund when a new truck or new carts need to be purchased. It is tailored to the needs of the residents and the capabilities of the city, ensuring that it operates as effectively and efficiently as possible, with room to grow. And since it is operated by the city and not a third party, the city controls the largest costs associated with the program, such as infrastructure and employee-related expenses. And yes, there is no opt-out because this would increase costs and decrease the efficiency and effectiveness of the program. That would not be a conservative approach. From the beginning, I asked that this program not be pitched as a savings to the city because it is not. It is a new service offered to the residents of Chillicothe. And I made it clear, if the residents wanted this service, they had to pay for it. And I personally received an overwhelming response in support of curbside recycling. When we live in a community, we must come together to do what is right. There's no opting out of our shared future. This program is right for Chillicothe. It is right for the future of this city, and it is right for the future of our children. Please vote yes in support of a curbside recycling program for the city of Chillicothe. David J. Clay." That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Luttrell. Moving on, our auditor, Ms. Crystal Svetnayel. Here's the camera again.
I would also like to show my support for the curbside recycling program with numbers, item number one on the agenda. In order to have a sustainable program, it's imperative to pass the ordinance as presented. Implementing the fee will help plan for the future, plan for future capital purchases, and create a financially responsible program. One thing that I would ask council to consider would be to possibly create an enterprise fund. That would be a fund that we can use to track refuse and then create a sub-fund within that fund so we can track both of those programs separately. From that point, we can track the revenues expenditures and reevaluate both of their fees to see if maybe possibly in the future, there's something that we could do about the fees. Even though refuse does operate in the black, there would still not be enough money necessarily to operate a successful long-term recycling program, especially if there would be an economic downturn. So in able to keep this program successful, I ask, I would like to show my support for the way that we're going to stay. The next item on the agenda I'd like to show my support for is the Children's Service Safety Levy. This is a 1 million, five-year renewal. It's not an additional cost to what you're already paying, and it's something that will keep our kids safe and provide opportunities that many of them won't get. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Svetnayel. And our wall director, Ms. Rutherford.
Thank you, President Arnold. I'd like to speak about item three, which is the second reading of an ordinance for the indigent defense. This is a yearly thing that we go through, and it can go all three reads. We were just, started looking through our yearly reports and looking at saying, what do we need to do annually? And so I would kind of remind committee members that maybe you should do the same if you have ordinances that need to be passed before the end of the year. We only got one more council, so you might have to look at it. Send this over to my office if you'd like to have that put on the agenda. And lastly, I would just like to voice my support. I don't get to make policy or anything. I don't get to be your legal advisor, but I do support item one, the curbside recycling. I've been recycling ever since we did away with it here in the city, and I'd be thrilled So I just want to say that I do support that. And I will stop. And then, at this point, we go to audience participation. And since we have such a large audience here tonight, we want to clearly state that we do have a sign-in sheet. We have some people on here who have signed in. As your name is called, please step forward to the microphone. Council Rule 21 does limit each speaker to five minutes, and a total limitation of 15 minutes per subject. So if we're talking pro or con about recycling, you've got 15 minutes, so be brief, because somebody else might have something to say. If you get close to your five minutes and have one minute remaining, I'll wave my finger at you to tell you you have a minute. That will hopefully give you time to wrap up your presentation, and I will cut you off in five minutes. Even if you want to speak and you're not on the sheet, you're still more than welcome to. The only thing we do require you, when you come up to the microphone, is you've got to give us your community address. So starting with our list, I have Annette Smith is the first person on our list.
I am here in favor of the recycling program. I think it's an excellent use of grant monies to save the city a lot of money that would otherwise have to come out of city coffers, and it's a great use of that grant money. I think it's very cost-effective. The $2 a month, I can't haul my stuff to the recycling bins for $2 a month and get my car dirty and whatever. This is much more convenient. It's an investment in our future, cleaning up the landfills, reducing the amount of trash that goes in the landfills. And it's just, it's a no-brainer. It just makes sense. And I think they've done a really good job planning it and keeping it cost-effective so that we'll be self-sustaining, and I congratulate them on their planning, and I hope you vote yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Our second person on the list is Eric Reinhardt.
Thank you, council, president, administration, elected officials. I'm here in support of our curbside recycling as well. Everything that was said of the good, decreased fees, all the benefits of the program to our community does make sense. What I'm opposed to is the additional, right off the bat, $2 new fee, new tax, however you want to call it. In light of, I think year-to-date, if we look at 2017 alone, I'm not going to speak of the five years since the fee went from $10 to $15, we're looking at roughly about a $370,000 carryover in that fund. If you break those down into numbers, that's about $3.60 of that $15 that's not going for refuse, going into the general fund and being spent elsewhere. Up to the point, for today, there were some beggeries of those ancillary shared costs, which we know that are there. And thanks to Mr. Heinz, and this is Pappy, they gave me some figures. When I roughed those out from a three-year timeframe that we had those, that come to about $111,000 that we could, if you average those three. If you still subtract that out from the 370 carryover, you still have plenty of money in this first year to fund this program. I came to all of you guys, I read the literature, I'm still a political geek, I read you guys' literature, I go to the town halls and the candidates' night, and every single person here has always said, "I'm fiscally responsible. I'm fiscally responsible with your tax dollars." Up to this point with this recycling program, it can be funded with the overage of the fee. That's all I'm asking you guys to step back and take a look at that. Be fiscally responsible. When that was passed, most people assumed that that $10 to $15 raise that we made in 2012 was going to be paid for refuse. In hindsight, it wasn't all needed. There's no stopgap in the budget, so it did go into the general fund. I'm not accusing anybody of spending any money ill-gotten or ill-wrong, but now that we're asking for a new fee from the taxpayers, I think we should be spending every dime, every dollar out of that $15 first, and then let's move forward for that. That can be done several ways, not real hard to do. Like I said, if you pass your ordinance tonight, I'm only asking you to remove one thing from that, and that's the new fee, right now. Okay? You can go back and amend ordinance 8712, which is the ordinance that was passed that established the fee rate. And you establish, you put $2 out of that, $1.95 exactly, I don't care if you put $3, whatever you guys decide, you're the legislators, you control the purse strings. But then go back and take that, and then have that, at least for this first year, be funded through those funds. I love Crystal's idea. I read that, and I said, "This is perfect." It does need to be set up in an enterprise zone thing, so that those funds are going for refuse and recycling and any other ancillary costs, and it's not going into the general fund. The benefit you get from that is you create, just like we did when I was on council, when we had to raise those water rates real steep. Everybody remembers that $15 rate increase we had to go about? It was terrible. Well, we created that Water Rate Review Committee, which set up the mayor, council members, council president, and people at the public are on that board. That board meets yearly to review how that program's going. If fees need to go up, they make recommendations. If fees need to go down, they make those recommendations. That's all I'm, I mean, that's been a pretty simple process in year one, and you may come back in the first year and say, "You know what? We do need another dollar." But then it's going to go from 15 to 16, and it's one whole fund, it's not separated. But you went into that first year, the money's here, it's tight, but it's here. It's tight, but it's here, but it can be done. And then we moved that program forward. I've heard a lot of the talk about, it's almost been cavalier, the $2 fee. "Oh, it's just $2, just $1.95." And I call that a used car sale tactic, $2, $1.95. But anyways, for me, for my neighbors in Heswick, it's a piece of cake, for sure. It's not a big deal. For a lot of folks, Mr. Tappens' ward and Mrs. Patrick's ward, I do home care for a living, and I see a lot of those working poor, and I work with a lot of those elderly folks. And that's about $24, $23 a year for them. That's medications, that's groceries, that's gas bills. That's $200,000. Right now, you're wanting to take out the private sector of our citizens to fund this, when I think it could be done appropriately, with a few adjustments, and then come back in a year, have that committee established, and we all work together. I'll ask Luke to put me on that committee if it's established. I'd love to participate. So again, thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. The next person we have on the list is Alan Davis.
Alan Davis, I live at 370 Braywood. I was off on vacation, when I came back, I went through the papers that I had and read an article that seemed to imply that we should eliminate the $1.95 because our financial situation in the city was quite a bit better. And I said, "Well, which city is this? Is this Chillicothe that I live in?" Now, the only way you can really evaluate whether a city is doing better or worse in their financials is to look at a balance sheet. To look at an annual income statement is nice, but a balance sheet gives you the overall report of the health of the city. So that's exactly what I did. I supplied you the actual balance sheets right out of the audited financial statements, but I summarized it. So, and I first compared it to 2011, so the last five years, have we gotten better or worse? Current assets, much, much better. Current liabilities, much, much better. So together, those is tremendous improvement. A large portion of that's been offset by more long-term debt. And again, not that that's a bad thing, as we did that. But the one thing that you have to also look at is our year capital assets depreciated or growing in value. And they depreciated in value. They're $5 million less than what they were five years ago. So when you net all that out, the city, looking from a balance sheet perspective, over the last five years, the financial position of the city has deteriorated by $3 million. Now, it's actually more than that, because you would expect that net assets would increase over a five-year period, not decrease. So I went back and looked and compared it to 2005, and said, "Well, maybe that's just this short period of time where we struggle. Maybe over a longer period of time, which 11 years, what would it be?" Over 11 years, it's $10 million less, you know, or a poorer financial position. Okay, so that's where we're at, and we need to address that. Now, a thought when I was back there was saying, you know, they talked about, over the last two years, the city's done a detailed study on curbside recycling. Now, five years ago, we were put on fiscal caution, we said, "You need to do a five-year financial plan, you need to do a coordinated asset plan, and you should do an efficiency audit." So in five years, city council and the administration hasn't been able to do, address a five-year financial plan, hasn't done a consolidated capital asset plan, and hasn't done an efficiency audit. But they were able to spend the last two years doing the curbside recycling. Just one comment, $1.95 won't hurt my wife and I. But it does bug me a little bit. I live on Braywood. Braywood was last paved in 1984, 33 years ago. It's a disaster. If I'm going to pay an extra $2, a $1.95 a month, I'd much prefer it to go to repaving than to curbside recycling. I already recycle for free. As I drive around the city, Braywood and Johnson and Keller are not the only streets that are in bad shape. I happen to drive, for some odd reason, on Cliffside, and I said, "Oh, my word, Braywood's in great shape compared to Cliffside, the streets in this town." We are approaching them, but the amount of money that we're spending is not nearly enough. So hopefully, after we've done this curbside, maybe city council and the administration can finally do a five-year financial plan, a capital plan, and an efficiency audit, and we can address the fact that our financials are getting worse, not better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next person on the list here is Dan Wiltshire.
Yeah, Dan Wiltshire, he lives on 1230 Nelson Drive.
Smile with that face.
That's correct. It's been brought to my attention, I also am for the curbside recycling program, but I do want to clear up that again, because it's been brought to my attention that members of council have misrepresented myself by saying that I was against recycling. So I want to kind of clear that up once and for all. First and foremost, I am not against recycling, and I am not against curbside recycling in any way. I voluntarily recycle myself. So that being said, we have done a petition, pretty formal, but there are over 100 signatures here, mostly from the first ward that I have signed, and they are wanting, and I'll present these to Mr. Paulson. They're wanting two things, and Mr. Reinhardt discussed one of them, and that is to waive the $1.95 per month mandated fee for at least the first year. The second one is reviewing and reinstating the program on a yearly basis. Reason being is so we can check participation levels, and we can also check the tipping fee savings, which is, there's nothing wrong with doing that. I mean, you know, if you're going to go ahead and do the program, we might as well make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to do. The other problem that I had in the beginning was, since there was no surveys that were ever done, an issue of concern for me is the feedback and whether our citizens really wanted the program or not. We really didn't know, because no studies were done. So it was really difficult to see whether it was going to sustain itself in the future years. Hopefully, it will not come to mandatory participation with fines and penalties. Recently, council authorized an agreement with Bran Stetter Carroll &amp; Incorporated to conduct a feasible study on the city's existing facilities and appropriated $19,500 for the study. Shouldn't of the same consideration have been noted when the recycling issue was in committee? I believe so, since it affects 8,500 households. I personally would like to see a comprehensive waste plan. Since we are currently adding this curbside recycling to the list of services it provides, I would like to be considered as a part of a combined program, along with garbage collection, yard service, and large item pickup, and combining services in order to maximize efficiency of personnel and equipment while keeping the garbage fee the same to cover the cost of the entire program. Recycling is a desirable program, which helps keep our world clean, but all programs are not created equal. Chillicothe deserves an efficient, effective, and comprehensible plan at work. Let's make that happen. Thank you for letting me address you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wiltshire. Next person I have on the list is Jake McNeely.
First of all, I'm going to do the same thing I did two weeks ago. I want to thank the audience for coming, because I've been here a lot of times with Mrs. Riley and the Gazette, this young gentleman I have from Orchard Hill Church. We've been the only ones in here numerous times over the last three years. So I want to thank all of you guys for coming, because it's a great pleasure to see all the people here. First thing I brought up last week, Allen Avenue and speeding. Has anything been done with this? There's still speeding, the big trucks, the concrete trucks, still delivering, not going the back way. In a town hall meeting the other day, Luke could verify this, I asked Mr. Johnson in the town hall meeting, was the back access supposed to be for these trucks? And he stated it was. We need to do something about that, make them come up the back way, get off Allen Avenue, let's put the four-way stop up. The next thing I want to point out is, I took a little ride around town, because one gentleman, I don't know if he's still here tonight, he was here last week, and he talked about the East End of recycling. And he was talking about the trash in the East End and the alleys. So I took a ride, started at Watt Street, the Douglas, I went down every alley from Main Street to Worceford Avenue. Every alley, and I can tell you, recycling, my gosh, you need to go down these alleys a bit above. We're talking how we can fill the landfill up real quick. It's terrible. We need to do something to do that, to help the people in areas like that. And now, back to the streets. I've complained about digging up these new streets. Since I spoke here last, two weeks ago on Monday, there's been six new streets cut into again, six more. The other day, I turned on to Vine Street, the day that I went to the town hall meeting, off of Arch, I turned on Vine. What did I see? Big track hose sitting in the middle of the street, digging up. New street, no block, I, and then they blocked the streets off. They just started digging up a new street again. Here we go again. We need to concrete that with an ordinance, but they got to be patched properly. It's up to you to pass that ordinance. We need an assignment to engineering to get this going, to make sure that these streets are patched properly. Take a look at them, it's sickening. We're paying a lot of money in taxes, so we deserve them streets patched properly. As far as recycling, I agree with Mr. Reinhardt. I don't like the fee, because there's a lot older people in town that can't afford this. The other reason I'm against it, is another new theory I was thinking about is, you know, Mr. Wiltshire brought up the number of people who are being recycled. What about all the taxpayers that live in apartments, condominiums, housing that has their cycle, I mean, their trash picked up by the waste management, rumpie, all of them? They're not part of this $1.95. And we're going to have to pay the $1.95 if you pass it, but what about all them? They pay taxes like I do. We got the discrimination ordinance coming out. I know it's not on this subject, but to me, that's a little bit of discrimination, because you're not charging them, but you're going to charge me, even though I am a recycler, have been for 25 years, and I'm never going to change, so I don't care if you do it or not. But the problem is, it's not fair if you don't charge them the same taxpayers that you're charging me, if you're going to pass it in the form of sand. The other one is, too, you talk about recycling and not really looking at what's going on out there is, here's a thing to think about. You all belong to the city government, we're the citizens of Chillicothe, we deserve something else. The city goes around each day, picks up the trash out of the city park, they pick up the trash downtown. Where do they take it? Rumpie. I see them down there all the time. They're down there dumping the trash, they're not recycling. The city of Chillicothe isn't recycling, but you're telling all of us to recycle, but you're not recycling. Are you in this ordinance to recycle? No, you're taking it all to rumpie and paying the dump fee, and throwing everything under the sun in there. We need to take a look and go back and do this ordinance right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Next person we have on the sheet here is Marcus McKeely, can I say it right?
That's close.
Okay.
Help me. Hi, my name is Marcus McKeely, I'm from 609 Beechwood Street. I have three school-aged kids. We have a lot of recycling, there's a lot to be recycled in my household. We made an effort to do that, starting in 2013, and found it was incredibly difficult that I do not have a truck to do that in. We were taking garbage, recycling in our car, traveling with three kids to get this done. This was very, very difficult. I started researching the different programs and things that go on, including paying somebody specifically to come and pick it up. Now, because of the different ordinances in place at that time, it made it difficult to do that, but I saw that the best rate that you could find in other surrounding communities was $6 a month. was $6 a month. $2 a month sounds like a pretty good fee to me, considering our situation, okay? So during 2015, because of the difficulty recycling in this community, I started a Facebook page called Recycle Chillicothe. During that time, I started a petition through iPetition.com that now has 296 signatures and 80 specific comments to this area bringing back curbside recycling, okay? Now, being a father of three, and also case manager, works with kids, I find that this is a very important issue, not only to us, and not only in a community that is going to run times to have a win, I think that it's not only a great thing that's going on with our council and with our city officials, but I think it's a great thing that's going on for the kids, because they need this win just as much as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKeely.
That's a kill.
I'm sorry, I do watch the English language, I do watch the English language a lot. Next person on the list is Daniel Richmond, correct?
Yes, Daniel Richmond. So, I know I'm not the best dressed, but I had school today, so don't worry. Freeze a quarter. So I am here for the non-discrimination ordinance, rather, the lack thereof. I, I should probably give some background by myself, because anybody knows who I am. So I'm Daniel Richmond, I'm 17, I'm a senior at CHS, I'm an artist, I'm a physician, I'm a programmer, so, sorry if I'm not a big legislation person, I'm not up to David Balinga, so. But recently, I was appointed the vice president of our Joint Party High School's H-SR Alliance, or as we call it, Spectrum. Thank you, Time Warner, for competing with us for names. Really annoying. But this year, we had a surprising turnout. We had, you know, around 30 people come to our first meeting, and this was completely surprising. And what was even more surprising is, we had several trans students. So, we have transgender students who I didn't know about, and I had yet to meet, and I still do a few of them, so I find it very disconcerting that we are putting a non-discrimination ordinance on hold when we have an increase in LGBT youth and members of this community. I try to go out of town, I'm a cluse, so it's weird as it is, but I try and go out and support local businesses as much as I can, I try and be an, hopefully, an upholding citizen of Chillicothe. But the fact that I am, that businesses have the ability to kick me out of their store because I am gay, I, I'm not happy with that. I feel that I should be able to support my businesses, because regardless of your religious affiliation, I would like to be able to support you. I want to, to help you grow and make Chillicothe a better community, and give us what we deserve, and that's, you know, a better place for everyone to live. So I ask that city council try and, you know, reinstitute and re, you know, bring this issue back up, because it is an issue, we have a problem. I know several people who are top-down to it, and I hear in my hallways the amount of slurs that happen, and that's a CHS issue, but I'm trying to fix that right now, so. But the fact that I can get on the street, and I can't go into certain buildings, that I don't think that that is okay. It scares me. It says that Chillicothe is solid cistic in its thoughts and its views. And I, I hope that we are able to bring this forward, so our youth and our citizens are able to help Chillicothe become a better place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. We still have some time, if anybody else would like to speak, towards recycling, but we have time for, anybody speak, come on, you're more, anybody's welcome to speak, this is our participation. Well, we do have a few more minutes left on recycling, or any other stuff.
Hi, my name is Mary Newman, I live at 78 Timber Lane in Hesswood, and I'm a supporter of recycling. And I, the main reason is because we, we are a progressive community, and we should address things in a proactive way. This is workable, the $2 isn't that much. And they can't just spend the money that they already have picked up because they need money for reinvestment in long-term machines. I mean, when I first moved into Hesswood, the trash can would go down the street, and there would be oil all the way down the street. The thing never worked. They straightened it out. I mean, why can't they just leave well enough alone? They want to do program, they figured out how to do it, it's $2, we can do it. The thing that I did, when I was up in Grove City, what'd I see? Trash cans, recyclables, a progressive community, progress. I think we should do that.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. And again, still have a little time left, if anybody else would want to speak.
My name is Belle McHell, I live at 38 Timber Lane.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Belle McHell, I live at 38 Timber Lane.
Thank you.
I also live in the Hesswood neighborhood, and I would like to say that about three years ago, I organized a neighborhood for social and communication purposes, and I found a, a large percentage of homeowners in that neighborhood who are favorable for this particular curbside recycling program. I realize not everyone is, but I have more than 100 people on my email list, and I've found a very high percentage of those who are in favor. And I will say that I attended this meeting at the first reading, and there were a tremendous amount of people in favor of this particular legislation, and there were absolute, there was no one speaking against it, no one providing any changes or suggestions or anything. There just, there wasn't anyone to hear a couple of weeks ago. So I'm kind of surprised they weren't here then, and now we're hearing it now with the third reading. I also believe that this is very progressive. I think the younger people who move into Chillicothe expect to have this program, they've had it in other places, and they're actually looking for the, a program for curbside recycling. I also feel that there are many people who would recycle a lot more if it were an easier thing to do. This includes people who don't have large vehicles to haul their recyclables, and this includes senior citizens who maybe are not able to do it, and I think it will increase the recycling that we have, and that people will actually be happier doing this, because it will decrease the amount of trash that they have. And so I encourage all the members of the council to vote for, for this legislation. Know that you've worked very hard on it and very long, and you've put some time into it, you, you haven't done it lightly without considering all sides, and I encourage you to vote for it.
Thank you, Ms. McHell. Have a little less than a minute left, anybody else like saying, come on, make a brief.
Not about recycling.
Not about recycling, talk about anything. I have less than a minute to talk about recycling.
My name's Jennifer Chandler.
I'm sorry, Jennifer Chandler.
Jennifer Chandler.
And your address?
I live in Pyton, do you still need my address? 105 West Street, Pyton, Ohio. I'm coming today to address council and mayor. You have heard some information about the onsite disposal facility that's being proposed in Pyton by the Department of Energy, and I wanted to bring to you the official position of the Village of Pyton. I am also on council for the Village of Pyton. So I do have some documents I want to submit to you, a letter to mayor that states the Village of Pyton's official position against onsite disposal. And we also have included resolutions that have been passed by the affected local governments that will have to be burdened by this facility. As you guys talk about recycling and diverting waste, and, you know, not contaminating your land and groundwater, we go the same way in Pyton. That's my purpose here, is to give you that information that I heard from several members of the board, and I think from the scoremen from Pyton Council, so I just wanted to give you the official position.
Okay, we'll take, take that and give it to the clerk, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Can I finish what she said? I'll take 30 seconds.
Oh, you've, you've got, yeah, you've got, well, you've got a minute and a half or better than a half.
No, you're all right, I won't apologize this year now.
Actually, not a minute and a half.
I won't take that long. There's one, I'm Dennis.
Five minutes or a total of 13 and a half minutes.
I won't, I won't take that long. I'm Dennis Foreman, I've been here before, my address is still 115 Fifth Street, I'm still paying my rent in Pyton, Ohio, 115 Fifth Street. And I've been taking notes, I've been paying attention, I like the story about respect, I'll bring that up again, the Chillicothe Gazette talked about him out of respect. Southern Ohio is not respected, unless you live here. This is awesome seeing all the people here. And I said that last time I was here. Fill this place up every time, not just for recycling, but recycling's important to me at my school, Robert knows this, I'm the one that started recycling program in my school, so I'm not trying to tell you what to do with your, your community, but we used to throw all the paper away, I thought this is ridiculous, we've done over 3 million pounds in recycling of paper alone, plus the custodians should love me because they're not taking it out to the dumpster. The children fight to do it, is that right, Robert? They fight to do it. We now have eight dumpsters for recycling. It's not trash, so I applaud you guys for taking this on, so you guys, you choose what you want. But when you talk about doing the right thing and not polluting the earth, come on, guys, we're from Pyton. Onsite waste disposal is talking about burying radioactive waste. What's the half-life of that? I'm doing that today, it's a part of my class, it's part of my standards. You throw a banana peel out, and let it take a week. You throw a plastic bottle, how long does that take? We know, it takes, it takes a long time, that trash stays in our cities, in our towns for a long time. Let's talk about radioactive waste. You're talking about unstable and stable items. That's a lot of things most of people in this council, you might not know about, you might know about. I'm not a specialist with it, but I know one thing, that's why we were smart enough to hire a third-party assessment. And I've heard some people say, well, hire another third-party assessment, what are we going to waste money for? The person we hired, the Ferguson group out of DC, did the one for Orange Tennessee. And a lot of people say, why do you come to Chillicothe? We need you. I got my news, I don't fool them, I'm smart enough, I know what to do. What's the best thing in tourism in Ross County? We all know, it's called Tecumseh. Who's been at Tecumseh, raise your hand, anyone that's been at Tecumseh? You've seen the story, what'd he do? He had to travel to get support. Well, I know I'm a little fat, and I'm bald, and I'm not Tecumseh. I'm good as Foreman, and I'm the modern-day Tecumseh. I'm coming to get your voice, I need your help. I read the article, and he said, we need your voice, thank you, Mr. Williams, I appreciate the support, a former Pike Countyan. I'm a Pike Countyan, but I'm working on all county. I'm up here teaching your children. I know you might be scared about that, but you got your past food restaurants? You say Mr. Foreman, you might get awayed on more quickly. You say Mr. Foreman, you might get awayed on, right, Robert? He knows I care about my students, I tell my students I love him, and I'm not going to take that back, I care about my students. I care about my friends, I see my friends back here, there's two ladies back here, there is one from Pike County, you have them now. It's a small area. But, you know, Senator Brown is in your paper today, it's right now, so when you go home, go online, on your Facebook, and pop open the Chillicothe Gazette. Senator Brown says, basically, I respect Pyton. This is a local issue. This is an issue that should not be a contractor coming to you guys. They're going to come and offer you a tour. You want to take that tour, take that tour. That building, they've had a tax abatement, Usec come in for a little bit, but other than USEC, it's been the DOE, they've had 100% tax abatement, they have not paid my town taxes. Our town is collapsing. We don't have $1 million to do paving here, I think that's what you guys spend, that's our budget for the whole year. You talk about being poor, our water lines, our sewer lines are crushing. You think Pyton, Ohio would have a city that looked like Bristol Village? If you know what Bristol Village is, go to Wayland, drive through Bristol Village, it looks like the Truman Show. It's beautiful, it's amazing. You come into my town, we are doing the best we can, I'm proud of my town. You drive our main street, we have new sidewalks, we have paving, we fight. When contractors try to slap crap, we take them to the Supreme Court of Ohio and we win. We do not back down, DOE or you're no different. I hope I'm on camera, because I'll say it to your face. Our town fights for what is right. Radioactive waste, we're not talking about doing a recycling program just like you guys, we'd love to, we'd love to, we don't have it. But here's the deal, we need you. We are your neighbors, I told you last time, we shop at your stores. We come up to your Christmas shop, we come to your, your restaurants. I even date some of your women. And my old girlfriend probably grins your dog back here, people. Sir, by the Christopher Green, grins his dog, I know, grins the mayor's dog, how about that, it's a small road, right? Oh, no, I see that they're going to his dog also. It's a funny thing, but being honest, guys, we need you. All we're asking you to do is support us. Pyton's voted for, Wayland's voted for, the townships, Charlie Reader, the legislature, the list goes on. I don't know what the commissioner's problem is, but you tell, tell me what. What benefit is a radioactive nuclear dump in our town? They emailed, they already sent a message to Tony McGovern, the Republican Commissioner, and said, we're not going to clean those plumes up, they're going to come and tell you they want to clean them up. That's a lie. Won't you take me with you, take this one with you, so I hear everything they say. They're going to show you, 1950s buildings are falling apart in 3,000 containers, 14 tons rusty. Send them away, send them to the desert, I appreciate your time, I'm Dennis Foreman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Still got, anybody, kind of anything they'd like to say, yes? Name and address, please.
Sarah Richmond.
I'm sorry, what?
Sarah, Sarah, S-A-R-A.
Richmond.
Richmond, 662 Orange Street. I'm one of Daniel Richmond's proud mothers. I wanted, I don't know what's going on with the Social Ad Hoc Committee, or why they could need to talk to the law director, but I wanted to back up what Daniel said. This is still an important issue for a lot of people in Chillicothe. I am very lucky that I grew up here, and I loved living in Chillicothe, but as I got older, I realized this was not a safe place for me, so I left. And my wife and I, had Daniel, and we have three other children, who I am extremely proud of, and we moved back to Chillicothe, so that I could care for my mother and my grandmother. I lost my grandmother in February, and over the summer, we just found out that my mother has cancer, and she's not going to make it. I'm now based with the idea of just leaving, because I don't know if I want to live the rest of my life in a place that doesn't protect me, or respect me, or respect my children. Daniel was the youngest, now the last one left, and I don't know what the older kids are going to decide, I have a feeling that if nothing happens, then they'll probably leave with me. So I just want to make sure that whatever's going on, that the rest of city council knows that we hold you responsible for keeping this going, for making sure that this is a part of the conversation, that you make sure that if something needs to happen, it happens, because every single one of you is responsible for making sure that the citizens in your board, who identify as LGBT or allies, are protected and feel safe and respected in their community, just like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And a lot of others?
Hi, I'm the Reverend Terry Williams, I reside at 371 Fifeus Lane here in the city of Chillicothe, and I am not able to speak to you today about how much I really do support recycling, because of course, we don't have any more time for that. What I'm here, though, to speak about is my deep concern about the way in which Committee Assignment 16-079 has been handled. That is a non-discrimination ordinance. For the last nine months, this ordinance has not received any public meetings, have not received any public hearings. There has been no discernible progress and no documented progress on that. There has been no discernible progress and no documented progress on that assignment. And only this last week, when I began preparing for what was supposed to be a meeting today of the special committee, I made public records requests of not only Ms. Gray, but of Mr. Arnold, the president of council, trying to find out exactly where the jurisdictional assignment of that committee assignment had ended up. Originally, it was assigned to the Community Affairs Committee, which was chaired at that time by Joshua Carte, who sat in the chair of the esteemed Dr. Kearney. When Dr. Kearney took over the committee, it was announced that that particular assignment was going to be handled by a different set of people, a special committee assembled at the time of Ms. Gray and Mr. Florima and Mr. Clay, whose seat is now occupied by Mr. Heinz. People just keep moving all around in this story. The concern, though, that I posed in my public records request was that I did not know where exactly there had been a vote of council to move that assignment from the Community Affairs Committee into another committee. According to Rule 5B in the Rules of Council, there has to be a vote of the whole council to move something from one committee to another because we're not permitted to play fast and loose with legislation. I received a great number of responses from Ms. Gray and I thank her for her complete response to me. She was very, very forthright in communicating to me and then moving that to Mr. Arnold. Mr. Arnold did not respond to my public records request in the timeframe I requested and indeed, last Friday responded to me with a non-response. I don't know what the situation is or where we're going to end up after the consultation with the law director, which I requested two weeks ago, but my concern is very simply this. I'm disappointed in this council. I'm disappointed in this council because there are people like Daniel Richmond and like Sarah Richmond and people like me who, in this community, as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer people, have heard silence from this council. For 481 days, it has been 481 days since that committee request was made, we've heard silence from this council during public meetings, two public meetings that were visceral, that were vicious, in which we, as members of the community who are queer, had to hear things like, you're an abomination. God did not design you that way. You are not welcome in this place and you do not need protection. Indeed, we still have the misunderstanding from some who are running for office that were already protected by equal employment opportunity law. Even one woman from Circleville that voiced her concern that gay and lesbian people were going to institute Sharia law, as if we were somehow going to fare better under that. All of this craziness brought out in these public meetings and not a word of affirmation from a single person on the council. Gay and lesbian, bisexual, transgender youth heard nothing from the lips of their elected officials to affirm their humanity. They heard nothing from the elected officials in this room to affirm their personhood. And now they see, after 481 days, whether through incompetence or intentional misdirection, no public meetings before the election. I'm disappointed in this place because you can do better. Our children deserve better, as Dr. Kearney said. Our children deserve a better future. Our children deserve a community that stands with them. We can get this legislation done in a way that protects religious authority as well as personal civil rights, but we can't do it in silence. The children in this community deserve more from you than silence.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add to public participation?
My name is James Hill.
James.
Hill. H-I-L-L.
Thank you.
I'm a new resident, fairly new this summer at 22 East Fifth Street. This is the house with rainbow flag on the front porch. I just wanted to say I've been familiar with Chillicothe for a long time. I'm from Jackson County, originally lived in Athens for the last 20 years, moved here as director of the public library system. I, I see that there is a lot of progress going on in Chillicothe. It's very exciting. Recycling is great. I was shocked that we didn't already have that when I moved to Chillicothe. I will say, I, I last week had a meeting with someone from Westerville who had not been to Chillicothe for 20 years and he was amazed and pleased to see the downtown area. He didn't think it was the same place. Oh, I, I wanted to speak in favor of recycling, but I know our time is up, but I will just say thanks for the bike lanes and anything else that we can do to keep Chillicothe moving forward is greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Anybody else? If not, let's move on to old business. Anybody who thinks about any old business they'd like to bring up? Yes, Mr. Crowell?
Well, speaking of old, old, old business, I did want to talk about item number one on the agenda, just for the fact that I was thinking back the other day, and as often I do when I'm trying to make a tough decision, you know, I'll say a little prayer about it and my mind was kind of opened up to something that I hadn't thought about before, but in 2007, when I ran for office, there was a question at the League of Women Voters, and if any of you, I don't know if Pat was there. That's about it. Someone just left. And Eric was it? There was a question about what could we do locally to help our environment? And at the time, I remember thinking, wow, that is, you know, it's a pretty big question. It's easy to get overwhelmed because the world's a big place, we're a small town. What could we do to help? And I remember some of the ideas that people were pitching around and I had to get up and speak and I had to say something. And at the time, I mentioned perhaps someday we could bring back curbside recycling because, grasping at straws, there's got to be something that we could do. And for 10 years, we've talked about it. We speculated, couldn't it be done again? In fact, I've kept my recycling bin. I still have the little blue bin in my shed, just in case. But now we're finally at a point where we could do something that the people in Chillicothe have wanted for a long time, something that has been denied them just because we couldn't financially do it. And I'm really, you know, somebody that doesn't like to spend money. I shared David, and David, Clay and I, we, we talked about this when we first introduced, when he first introduced it, and I said, it has to be sustainable. I agree with you, David. It has to be sustainable. It cannot be something that we give to the people and then take away. It has to be done in a way that is, you know, responsible and that would help us in the long term. I believe, and I'm not a member of that committee, but I believe that committee did a good job of putting together a program that is sustainable and will give the people of Chillicothe what they've wanted for so long, which is curbside recycling. There are things that, you know, I'm concerned about that I hope that over time we can make changes to. You know, I do, you know, worry about the size of the containers, but I was glad to see the mayor brought in one of the containers and had his mother model the use of the container. And it put my mind at ease because she's a, she's a tough lady and I think if she can do it, I can do it too. But these kind of things that have come up are very minor, minor concerns, things that we can fix. I want to say that I also like the auditor's suggestion that we could someday maybe break this off as an enterprise fund. I think that any time that you are able to do that has worked well for us and the water department's worked well and transit for fiscal responsibility. I like those ideas. But the legislation we see today brings us into this, you know, new age where we are going to take and be able to take and compete against other communities with the prestige that we have here. It's going to be something that's attractive as people move into our community. It's something we can hang our hat on. So I wanted to offer my support and just kind of share that this has been a long road, longer, you know, we've talked about how we've worked on this all year. Maybe this council has, but the people of Chillicothe have worked on this a lot longer and this is for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowell. Any other old business? Anybody would like to bring up? Yes, Mr. Heinz?
I want to offer support for insurance services levy as well. I think that's, that's a big deal and we need to do that. But I, I want to offer maybe an angle in between all of this about recycling. And I know that you guys have heard this said, I, I do recycle. My wife and sons just loaded up our vehicle the other day and took it to one of those containers. Initially, the thought of recycling at the curb was really enticing to me and especially since it was going to cost more, probably less than a dollar at a time if somebody else would come get it. And I've been, I was in all those meetings leading up to the legislation and I, I saw literally the overwhelming support that was given to it. I've now heard from people in the ward and I've personally spoken to people about it and, and honestly, I'm surprised at the number of people who, who claim that they recycle. I didn't, I didn't have any idea. And I've heard all the numbers thrown around about the surpluses and I've tried to navigate all of that with the help of the auditor, some former council people, and, and trying to get through those, all those ideas. I do think it makes us really good stewards to find a way to get this done and to get as many people to participate as possible. And I have, I've had those, I've had those who tell me they recycle, that some of them, they don't want to pay the fee because they're already recycling. I've heard others say the size of the cart's a big deal and have questions about how to store it and how to move it if they can't, if they're not able to. I've heard others say that neither the fee nor the tip are concerned to them, the tip cart, and they are, they're elderly and have fixed incomes and they want to move forward regardless. I'd be lying if I said this hasn't been easy to come to a conclusion on. And, boy, I'm an advocate. I think it's totally convinced that, I'm not totally convinced this is the best way to move forward, but I do understand, having been in leadership for a while, sometimes you just got to get the ball rolling and you got, you got to do it and, and go with it as you go. And I do think we should investigate some things that we can do to make it better as we go forward. And I, the things I've investigated, there, there are municipalities who do senior discounts, there are others who offer some kind of thing for, for those who are unable to move the cart, that the city will take care of that for them. I think, I do think a regular review and reauthorization is an absolute necessity and if it's necessary for that DORA thing we considered earlier, then it's probably necessary for this as well. And so I think we've got to, we've got to kind of apply those things. And, and I'm all for what, what doesn't just describe about that enterprise fund. I think that's a, we want to have this lack of clarity moving forward. We have to do something with refuse of recycling in the future. I, I believe the consideration implementation of, of these kinds of measures will, would help to quell some of the aggravation or frustration or the not knowing about it. I think we could get, I think there's other things that we have to get the ball rolling on and things are like sewer utilities and this city building and engineering issues we haven't yet got, got fixed. But having talked to former Councilman Clay and understanding all the work he did for it, it's been a decent time with auditor spec nagle, they, they both have insisted to me they believe this is a fiscally responsible program. And I've heard other council persons in this, in this room talk about it, if it's not working, we'll get rid of it. And with those things being said, I, I intend to vote today with a hint of reservation reluctance to move forward this, only as an effort to build bridges and go forward. Because I know there's other things we have to work on together to make our city better. And my, my hope and my prayer, like those, that city sewer utility, like the, the issues with city engineering and the building department, my hope and prayer is that we will all work together to do what's best now for our city and what's best for all of our residents moving forward. And so I, I wanted, I want to walk forward at the best foot possible that we can do. That's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Heinz? Anybody else have any? Yes, Ms. Patrick? We got the camera.
I think I'm going to be the lone no-go downer. First off, this is kind of a horribly hard decision for me to make. I've recycled two years, my kids have done it. With the former mayor planting, the recycling committee and everything, and do we need it? We absolutely do. But I'm coming at it from a different viewpoint. We haven't seen the 2018 budget yet. We know we've got issues in the engineering and building department that are going to take money to fix and we don't know if we've even got that money to take care of it. It's just that unknown of not knowing what the budget is even close to being for next year. I just can't, I look at it, would I do this for my own family if I didn't have all the information that I would need? And I wouldn't. You know, this is taxpayer dollars. You know, we already hit you up with the two levies, which you graciously, you know, supported for us for the streets and the safety, and we had to increase the sewer rate. So you've been hit with a lot, you really have, but I just need to know where we stand with the 2018 budget so I can make a completely informed decision. So that puts a no vote for me. But Beth, you've done a very good job and if this had been earlier in the year, we had more time to look at the budget, see where things were, you know, I probably would have supported it, but I just can't do it. Just can't do it. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Ms. Patrick. Any other old business? Yes, Ms. Gray?
Having been years ago director of litter prevention and recycling, as well as my sister, who handles litter prevention and recycling, I want to commend Mrs. Neal as well as former Councilman Clay for the work done with the auditor as well as the mayor on putting this program together and comparing it to what we had years ago. I have to say that we have to start somewhere. And while I agree with you, Mrs. Patrick, about the budget, we have to at least get something going. As Mr. Heinz has said, we'll definitely have to make changes. It's not perfect. We realize it's not perfect. We recognize that there are things that need to be tweaked with the program, but we do have to move forward with it. We do have to start somewhere in order to figure out what needs to be done to make it better, to make it work and make it work for all of our citizens. Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any other? Not seeing any. We move on to petitions and correspondence received by the clerk. Mr. Paulson, do you have anything?
Mr. President, I have nothing other than I did refer to you a rezoning that has been approved by the Chillicothe Planning Commission on property out on Western Avenue for the credit union. Has requested that and I urge you to assign that to a committee as soon as possible to keep it moving forward. Thank you. That's all I have.
Received it and that will be done. Meeting dates, the finance committee mentioned Wednesday, Ms. Wednesday, the 25th at 6:30. Here in the chambers, they've got three, two assignments, two or three assignments to discuss. Any other committee assignments? Yes, Ms. Claire?
I'd like to also take back on the October 25th meeting.
Okay.
And we'll go right after dust and meet in reference to whether or not city council members would like to give a resolution of support of being against the nuclear waste sale and forefront. We did have a, a meeting on this and we felt that we did not have enough council members attended that meeting and we'd like to go forward with that and see exactly whether our council would support that.
Have Community Affairs then following the finance meeting that, that evening. Any others? I, the committee assignments and meeting dates, we've had a lot of committee assignments since our last meeting. I would try to buzz through these. On tonight's agenda, we have a request for legislation to accept and appropriate $2,532 and change from HIDTA as reimbursement for overtime from the city incurred, the city incurred from the drug enforcement detail. That's on tonight. Request to consider the implementation of a DORA refreshment area in our downtown area and upon approval, introduce legislation to move forward with the application. That was discussed prior to this meeting. Request for legislation, legislation to appropriate various funds to make payroll, fringe pension and bond payments for the remainder of 2017. Request for legislation to authorize the city participate in the elderly and disabled transit fare assistant program grant contract with ODOT. Assignment 17-129 was actually just different numbers from previous assignments, so assignment 129, it was never presented and it's been dropped. Request for legislation to return $10,000 fire security deposit to the property owners of 327, 329 Clay Street. That's on tonight. Request for legislation to extend the municipal court victims witness assistance program and to accept grant monies. and to accept grant monies from VOCA with matching funds and SBAA. Request for legislation to suspend maximum hours for a part-time security officer to allow services for the remainder of the year. Request for legislation to accept and appropriate $1,500 grant received by the Chillicothe Fire Department from the Chillicothe Elks Lodge, number 52. Request for legislation to appropriate the money for the city to demolish the building at 700 Washington Avenue. And request after review, request after review for legislation to adopt Amendment 2017-1 of Ross County City of Chillicothe Thoroughfare Planning prioritizing the state Route 159 widening project from intermediate to high priority. Okay, that's that. And with that, we move on to legislation. So, Mr. Paulson, any time you're ready, item number one, please.
Third reading of an ordinance establishing a curbside recycling program within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, accepting the Ohio EPA grant in the amount of $250,000, and the Ross Pickway Highland Fayette Solid Waste Management District Grant in the amount of $50,000, authorizing the acceptance of bids for bins and trucks, appropriating funds for bins and trucks, authorizing the hiring of two recycling program positions, establishing a fee of $1.95 for the recycling service, and setting aside 25 cents of said fee for capital expenditures, and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Roll call on that item, please.
Tatman?
Before I give my response, we have a lot of good people on the east side of town. There will be some issues, but I'm hopeful that we'll address them. So I vote yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two.
Second reading of an ordinance amending Section 121.03 and adding Section 121.032 of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
That will move on to next meeting. Item number three, please.
Second reading of an ordinance providing for an agreement between the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and the Ross County Commissioners, whereby the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, will continue to be eligible through 2018 for state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing counsel for indigent criminal defendants, and declaring emergency. Second reading.
That'll move on to the next meeting. Item number four, please.
First reading of an ordinance transferring $3,702.95 for the purchase of firearms, holsters, and ammunition for certain employees of the Chillicothe Municipal Court, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florima?
After reflecting in my report to expedite this for the municipal court, I move to adjourn the review.
Motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Mr. Crowe. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of a resolution supporting the Ross County Children's Services Renewal Levy before the voters on November 7, 2017. First reading.
Yes.
Ms. Claire?
I'd like to move that weighed three re-rule.
That motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Yes.
Ms. Claire?
I'd like to move that weighed three re-rule.
That motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,000 received as security as the result of a structure fire at 327-329 Clay Street, Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Crowe?
I would like to ask that we please weigh the three re-rules.
That motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Ms. Gray. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that motion has passed.
Roll call on the legislation.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $2,532.40 received as reimbursement from HIDTA for police department overtime incurred during a drug enforcement detail and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florima?
Thank you, President. Again, reflecting my report, in order to get this hearing, I'd like to have a motion weighed three.
Motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number eight.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the city and the Ohio Department of Transportation, accepting $9,665 in grant funds from ODOT, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Ms. Patrick?
I'd like to make a motion to weigh the three re-rules.
I have a motion weighed three re-rules, seconded by Mr. Crowe. And roll call on that motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florima?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Mr. Crowe?
At this time, I'd ask that we please adjourn to executive session to discuss potential litigation and a possible acquisition of property.
Uh, second motion? Mr. Heinz? Roll call on our motion.
Tatman?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.